The proper ID and password, and we will be considering the following applications. Application A, 2020-7, 229 Forest Road, requesting a variance to reduce the street line setback from 50 feet to 22 feet for construction of a covered front porch. Owner applicant, Arthur Ferrucci. Item B, application 2020-8, 20 Clear Lake Road, requesting a variance to reduce the street line setback from 50 feet to 32.2 feet, and reduce the side yard setback from 15 feet to 6.8 feet for construction of a carport and an additional off rear of house. And an addition off rear of house. Owner applicant, John and Kathleen Fleming. All interested persons participate via Zoom, meeting identification and password, and all other applications are to view for public inspection at the town's website.
All right, thank you, Ed. So that's going to be our initial agenda here. I'll ask any...
I was gonna say, Steve, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda and take application B, 20 Clear Lake Road first, and 229 Forest Road second.
Okay, do we have a second to amend the agenda?
I will second Melinda's motion.
Okay, Ed seconded. All board members in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I heard from all four, so we have a unanimous agreement to amend our agenda. Thank you, Melinda. So, do any board members have a conflict of interest of either of these two applications before us this evening?
No.
No.
Nope.
Not either. So, good. All four board members will be able to vote. We also received our minutes of last meeting. Does anyone have any comments on those, or if not, we could, someone make a motion to approve the minutes of last month's meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of meeting of May 18, 2020.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous again, so we approved our minutes from a month ago. And just for Mr. Fleming, so, and anyone, that's the only other person on the line at the moment. Oh, maybe just ask a favor there of Tom. I don't know if you have a phone number for Mr. Ferrucci, but if you could possibly send him a text, because maybe he's got trouble coming in on the computer. You know, you can call in on your cell phone and, but if you want to try to just make him aware, just so we make an attempt to contact him, just to make sure that he's not having troubles and that he knows the meeting has commenced.
Okay, we'll do it. I'm looking for the number now.
Okay.
Yes, got it.
Thank you. Okay, and for Mr. Fleming, the, how we're going to proceed here, if you've never been to one of these meetings is, you just heard the agenda, you're going to go first. We've all got your application before us, and I don't think, Tom, we didn't receive any other inputs from either the East Shore Health Department or any other...
I don't have anything in the file from East Shore, but that's, that's part of the application process if he's approved. But I do have letters of support from neighbors if, when you're ready for those.
Right, in a couple of minutes, we'll ask for those. So anyways, we, we have your application before us. We'll hear of any inputs from other neighbors or other interested parties who have contacted, you know, Tom before this, and it'll be read into the record. And then you'll have the opportunity to just say what you want to do in your own words, and the board members will have an opportunity to listen, and then maybe question, any questions they've got in their mind on what's being asked for here. And after everyone's, board member wise, have had a chance to provide their input, we'll go open it up to the general public, if anyone's involved on the phone, they'll have a chance to speak in favor, speaking against, or just question it. So everyone will have an input, chance to give them an input. And after that takes place, we close the public hearing part. It goes into the board, we'll discuss amongst ourselves, but you'll be able to hear everything right here, and then we'll take a vote, and it needs four positive votes to pass. So this is probably a good time, since you're on the agenda here, would you like to still proceed, even though we've got four board members here, and it takes four board members to approve the application?
Yeah, yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of, most people go forward with it. I'm not trying to persuade you one way or another, but, you know, you've got to wait another whole month for this to go on again.
Right.
So it's, so, okay, so we'll proceed on that. I will read into the record the stated hardship, since as everyone knows, and yourself, we need to find a hardship to make a, to approve a application for a variance. Let me turn in the pager, my thumb with a Band-Aid on, it's kind of hard to do. So, okay, the stated hardship is because of the undersized lot size of .39 acres and the peculiar shape of the lot, with the rear being only 22 feet wide, we are unable to add additional square footage for living space and a car garage while staying within zoning guidelines. So it's primarily the unique shape of the lot is the hardship that's stated. And Tom, this might be a good time for you to read into the record inputs from the neighbors that were received. You're on mute, Tom.
This is, this is a letter, they all, all the letters read exactly the same, but they're signed by all of the abutting property owners that surround the subject property. And they read, "We have been informed of the Flemings' plans to make changes to their property at 20 Clear Lake Road, North Branford. The plans include enclosing the carport, adding a one-car garage, adding a three-season porch to the back of the house. We understand that the garage addition will require a variance for the zoning setback requirements, and we are in agreement." And so the first letter is from Daniel and Caitlin Remick. And we have the same letter from Thomas Riscotti and Jennifer Riscotti, and the same letter again from Lisa Pulaski and Gabriel Viglio, and from Matt and Christine Ziancola.
Okay.
All in favor.
All right, thank you for those inputs, Tom, reading them into the record. And now, Mr. Fleming, is there anything you'd like to add to the application, and just so we get your input directly?
No, I think it's pretty much self-explanatory at this point, unless, you know, I'll answer questions, but I don't have anything to add at this point.
I'll just start off with one question, I guess, just, it's always good to know. Have you lived in this house long?
This was actually the house that I grew up in. When my father passed away, we purchased it and completely remodeled it. So we've been in this now, going, six, going on seven years.
Okay.
So, my name is Vin, how you doing, Mr. Fleming?
Hi.
I'm looking at your, what I believe is the proposed addition.
Yes.
Three square feet.
Yes.
That's the garage?
Yes, that's the garage. It's going to go back into, I wanted to keep the front setback, you know, to what, a minimum, I didn't want to ask for more, so I, my back of the garage is going to go into the existing carport.
So, and you're going to leave the carport in place?
No, they, we're, on that diagram where it shows the, it specifies that as an overhang...
Correct.
Actually, the carport today. So that's going to be converted into living space, a living room.
Okay. So you're going to enclose that, make that a living room, put a garage in front of it, well, partially in front of it, partially in it.
Right.
And then the garage will extend in front of the house. Okay?
Correct. So, and then, it doesn't show it on there, but to the left side of that carport, there's a, another room there that's like a porch today. It's not really a porch, but it's enclosed room. That's going to be opened up into that carport back area, so it'll be one big living space, living room.
All right, I, I'm actually online, I could see it. Little blurry, but we'll give Google some credit for what they took a picture of.
Yeah, it was good that, when I got the, well, when we all got the paper copies from Lynn Walzak, I think that, I remember the last couple meetings, especially the last meeting, there was, there was so much, there was quite a few documents. It was kind of hard going back and forth from the, you know, having three or four windows open and not losing them somehow. So I personally like getting them in paper like this, I find it a little easier to work with. I don't know if the rest of you people are that way, but it's, it is handy to have things to look at and, right in front of you, instead of having to page through a whole bunch of screens on the computer. So, yeah, okay. It's pretty straightforward, like you said, in the application, what's being asked for here. All the abutting property owners are in favor, which is always a big consideration when it helps us make decisions. Because if the other people are really against it or are really for it, it's, it helps us make a wise decision, I think. Any other board member have a question for what's being asked for here?
I have another question. So, the picture in here, where you can see the bushes were removed, you've got that, like, tract of dirt.
Yeah.
Is that, is that on your property, their property?
Those were...
Half and half.
Yeah, the picture is, there was a Forsythia hedge there.
Yeah.
So, we took that, those were mine, so I took those down, so, because there was a tree in the backyard that we had to take down. So I wanted to be able to, they could drive the equipment down there, partially on my property and partially on the neighbors to get to that back area. And then we're gonna, eventually, we would put a fence back up partway out where that, where the property line is.
And the, where the bushes used to be, that's the, that would be the property line? The outside of the bushes?
Uh, no, it's actually kind of right in the middle of the, if you're looking at the picture that Tom took, I think.
Yeah, the dirt, the dirt line?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of in the middle of that dirt.
Okay.
In the middle of that area. Because there were, there were a very wide hedge.
Yeah, Google still has a picture with those hedges there, so.
Yeah, I just took them down.
Yeah, that's always a, potentially an issue when you have stuff in the back, and you need to get, whether it's a septic system, or like you said, a hedge brought down, and they need a, you know, a lift truck or something that's gaining access to your backyard, sometimes is a problem, no doubt about it.
Yeah, I can get down the other, I can go down the other side of the house to get down there, but I can't come across because of the, or I don't want to have anybody come across because of the septic stuff there.
Yep, I see the septic, yeah, you don't want to crunch, you don't want to crush that, that's for sure.
Correct.
Anyone else have a question for the applicant, what's being asked for here? Nope, okay, so, I, there's no one else on the Zoom meeting here, so no other inputs will be coming from the general public. So we'll close the public hearing of this part at 7:18, and discuss, and then vote upon the application. Anyone got any opening thoughts?
Um, I do. So...
Ed, you're on, you're on mute, I noticed.
So, so the lot is obviously going to be a factor here, and anything that the applicant wants to do, he's probably going to have to come for a variance due to the odd shape and the small size, very limited in his ability to manage his property without coming to see us. So I definitely see a hardship. The side yard setback really isn't much of a change, .7 feet, I think, .07 feet maybe, which I don't see as much of a problem. It's really the only variance that really matters, I think that makes a big difference, would be the front yard setback, which we've tried to alleviate as best we can by not putting the garage completely in front of the house. I see it as a fairly benign change, and the neighbors are all comfortable with it, so.
Yeah.
I agree with Vin, I see a hardship. I mean, it's a very undersized lot.
Yeah, good, good points, Vin and Ed. I feel the same way, it's, you know, there's a hardship here, given the, given the configuration of lot, and what the applicant would like to do, and all the neighbors in this case that are impacted are certainly in its favor, so that's, I certainly see a hardship and a harmony with the general purpose and intent of the regulations. So I see, it looks pretty good to me.
Steve?
Yep?
I'll make a motion to approve application 2020-8, 20 Clear Lake Road, map 41, lap 45, R40 zone, requesting a variance to reduce the street line setback from 50 feet to 32 feet, and reduce the side yard setback from 15 feet to 6.8 feet.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second Melinda's motion.
All right, got a motion and a second by Ed. All those in favor of approving this application, say aye.
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 No one was opposed, it was unanimous, so your application passes, and enjoy your new addition when it's all completed.
We got a few more steps to go through with the East Shore and stuff, but yeah, thank you.
All right. Our pleasure. Thank you for, for using the, you know, the procedure in town. Not everybody does such a things, and they sometimes have problems. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so, our amended agenda has the Forest Road application, and it looks as though the applicant has joined us.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm going to drop off.
Having trouble getting on, I guess.
Thank you.
No problem. We want, we changed the agenda so we could hear the other ones first.
I appreciate that.
Maybe you were having problems. So good, I'm glad you were able to join us. So, okay, our second agenda, our second item now is at 229 Forest Road, and I'll read the stated hardship into the record here. Okay. Stated hardship is, "We bought the house not realizing that you are supposed to have so many feet from the road. We'd like to change our existing front porch, our front steps to a front porch. We're getting an abundance of water in our basement from the wear and tear of the existing front steps, and we need to make a change quickly. The front porch will be bigger than the stairs, but in the same area, and will fix the water problem with our basement and with the front of the house." And the applicant, the applicant is on the line with us now. Is there anything you'd like to add to that? Is this Mr. Ferrucci?
Yes, how are you? No, that's just...
Hey, Steve, excuse me, do we need to, since they were a little bit late, do we need to say there's only four members seated tonight?
Oh, good point, yeah. So you'll notice, Mr. Ferrucci, we only have four members, four board members on the phone. We usually have five, and it takes four positive votes to pass. So, you know, if there's five members, four could vote for it, and one could vote against, vote against it, and it'll still pass.
Okay.
Tonight, we only have four, and it was same for the first applicant, he decided to go along with it with the four members. It kind of gives you a chance to still hear, will still hear it, and with, with hopeset in your mind that it would pass, and that you can get going on your, your project. So would you like to proceed with just having four board members on?
Yes, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, all right, well, that's good, that we can hear this. Anyway, so you were saying, it's pretty much, speaks for itself what you'd like to do, right? There's no other, no other comments you would like to add to it? We could, you know, we have the picture, and we have your application, and it's pretty straightforward what you'd like to do. Is there anything, Tom, in the record, all the notifications have been received?
No, everything else sounded good. I've been kind of doing it for him, because I'm home, he's always at work, but I've been talking to Tom and Lynn, I mean, everybody said that as long as you guys are passing, it looks like it would be good on their end, so we're just hoping that, you know, we bought this house from my mom, so we've been here about eight years, but we didn't even realize that, the whole law about like, being so close to the road. So it was kind of new to us, and we kind of thought since our existing steps were there, we were like, oh, we'll just fix it and, and put the porch, and, and then we found out that there's like, rules and regulations, so hopefully.
Okay.
We have a letter, Steve, from the Regional Water Authority, if I can read into the record.
Okay, good.
Okay. It's addressed to Kerry Duquez, Town Planner. Dear Mr. Duquez, regarding 229 Forest Road variance for front porch, the Regional Water Authority has received the above referenced proposal. The property is within the Farm River Public Water Supply watershed. The applicant is requesting a variance for front porch based upon the information submitted. We have no comment. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this application. If you have any questions, please email me, and the email address is in there. So they, there's a no comment.
Okay.
From RWA.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we also have your picture, or I guess that's another one you took, Tom?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a substantial front porch, it looks like it's well constructed. Let me put it that way.
It's right.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it would, and, you know, it's not uncommon to do what, what you're doing with houses that are fairly close to roads, like many on Forest Road or other older roads in town, where houses were built pretty close to the road. So I don't think it's, personally, I see a hardship, I think it's in, you know, it's in the same type of neighborhood, it's not going to be out of order as far as, you know, change in property values of local, I mean, of other neighbors and so forth, so, you know, and especially with having a water problem, and having, making sure the water now will get farther away from the house, and have a more, you know, substantial porch area to help the water drain away would be a good thing. So I think it's pretty straightforward what you're looking for here, and there's no other, no other neighbors on the line calling in to complain, that's, that's, that's always a good thing.
Right.
And it's, it's out in the record, so they're, they're well aware of it, or they have the opportunity to be well aware of it. So any other comments from board members, what's, what's being asked here? Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Tom, do you, what's the, what's the lot square footage? I'm missing that information on the application. Do we know?
.44 acres per the GIS.
Drew? What is it, Melinda?
.44 acres per the GIS.
And that's in an R40 zone?
It, it, it does say it's an R40 zone on the, on the application, but it also says that the property's conforming. Oh, no, no, it says it's not conforming, but it doesn't describe the nonconformity.
I'm sorry, it's .34 acres, it is a small lot.
Okay, thanks, that, that's all, I was just curious.
Hey, so I'm here, I've been sitting on hold waiting to get in for half an hour.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, did you hear, so you just heard the last, last couple minutes, I suppose, right?
Yeah, Ed, unfortunately.
And do you, do you have the package received, and you've looked, looked at it? Yeah, we just started, we, we changed the agenda, so the first applicant, the second applicant went first, so that, that one already passed.
Okay, great, okay.
It was written. So you've got the package, and I'll ask you if you have any, any conflicts with this application this evening?
I do not.
Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, seeing how you've heard what's going on here, and have the package, you're, you can vote tonight as a fifth board member.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions of what's being asked for here?
I, I really don't.
Okay, anyone else have a question or anything for the applicant? What's being looked at here? It's pretty straightforward, I think. And there's no other people I see on the Zoom meeting, so there's no other one to provide an input for the public, so we'll close the public hearing at this application at, oh, just so, well, anyways, and all your folks joined late, but after, after we close it to the public, we'll discuss it right here on the Zoom meeting, and we'll take a vote, and you'll hear within the next few minutes what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing on this at 7:29, and discuss and vote upon this application. Anyone have a opening comment they'd like to bring up for the, for the board?
Just that I was asking, you know, the lot square footage versus the zoning, because it's, again, it's clearly an undersized lot, and my, my thought is that, you know, it's a pretty benign reduction in that setback, considering the size of the lot.
Right.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
Yeah, I do, so I noticed the, now that I know the lot size, and, and obviously the house itself is already within the setback of the street line.
Right.
So, we're already nonconforming, and with a tight lot, it's, it's hard to do things that you need to do in the house. It is unfortunate that the applicant, I think, chose to start the project prior to checking into the rules, but what they're doing is fairly benign, and I think will increase the value of their home and, and it was around them.
Good points, Ed, I mean, good points, Vin, thank you. And I agree with both the comments that have been made so far by board members, and the fact that there's no one calling in to say, wow, boy, I don't like what they're doing to their house. So that's always a, help us decide what to do. So I see the hardship based upon the lot, and based upon the fact it was not conforming to begin with, and hardship also trying to stop a water problem in their house. So I'm pretty much in favor of it, as it's written here.
Then I'm...
Yep?
I'm sorry, Steve, I was just going to make a motion.
Oh, good, oh, that's good.
All right, I mean, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve application 2020-7, 229 Forest Road, citing section 61.3 of the North Branford zoning regulations.
A second.
And a second by Melinda. Any further discussion before we vote? Nope, okay, all those in favor of this application, say aye.
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 No, I heard five ayes, no one was opposed, so the application passes, so you have the opportunity to finish your porch.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you giving us the chance, we really, now we know for next time, the process, thank you so much.
No problem, yeah, it's usually good to follow the rules of town, it's, you know, helps you with problems down the road, that's for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. And the whole Corona thing too, it was a little bit harder, we didn't know where to start, you know, but it's going good now, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Well, thanks for following the rules. Okay, so, is there, anyone have any other business on the board or staff? Doesn't sound like it, so have we received anything, Tom, for next month, just so far?
No, nothing yet, Steve.
Okay, well, we'll see what happens. I guess we're ready to adjourn if we have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, by Ed, and a second by Vin, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we adjourn the meeting at 7:33, and we'll see if we talk again next month. Thank you very much.
All right, have a good night.
Everybody.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night, bye. Thanks, Tom, for setting this up.
Okay, Steve.
All right, and welcome back.
Thank you, good to be back.
Yeah.
Good to be back.